Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the February, Friday, April 22, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting on Friday, which is rare for us. But we're here, and as usual, we're doing it both in person and via Zoom. And as always, we will start it off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States
of America
From the United States of America
And to the Republic
For which it stands,
One nation
Under God
Indivisible
Liberty
And justice
For all.
Also, could we remain standing just for a moment? I read this morning that we lost John Hartwell, who was a longtime Greenwich resident. Actually, I think he grew up here, was on the board of Parks and Recreation, the RTM, and coached a lot of the youth football in town here, a great guy. And he was spending time here in Greenwich and in Jupiter, Florida. So if we could just have a moment of silence for John.
Thank you.
Okay, going on to the second item on the agenda, the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to accept the minutes for the regular meeting of March 10, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. And then lastly, is there a motion to accept the minutes of the special meeting of March 17, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving right along to the updates. I'll start with the first selectmen's updates. First of all, Happy Earth Day to everybody. I believe this is the 52nd year, 1970. Yes, timeout. Oh, I only have one, those are the only ones I have on my agenda. So. Thank you. All right, so before we get to the updates, let's, thank you. All right, so this has two extra ones. So is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 24, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Sorry. Lastly, is there a motion to accept the minutes of the special meeting of March 24, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Barb. All righty, we're up to date there. As I said, it is the 52nd anniversary of Earth Day, and lots of things are going on in town to celebrate that between now and next week when we have Arbor Day. So we'll probably see you outside at 3:30 for the proclamation. There is a cancer walk sponsored by the Pediatric Foundation for 10 o'clock on Sunday at Brunswick. So if you're not doing anything, it's a great cause, and you get some steps in on Sunday morning. Tomorrow, from 8:30 to 12:30, American Legion is hosting a pancake breakfast in Glenville, right next to the fire station. Four hours. Stop by, say hello to everybody. The proceeds are going to support lots of things, charities like American Legion Baseball and what else? There are Boys and Girls State, as well as a few other ones. So thanks to Peter LeBeau for getting that information over to us. Today is Josie Monroe's 100th birthday. We've probably had about 15 or 20 of these this year. This is unbelievable. So happy birthday to Josie, and we're going to go see her, I think, around 3 o'clock today, or 3:30. So she's terrific, and we'll be celebrating that with her. Also, it's Achilles' retirement, which is Alan Gunstberg's dog, faithful dog. So we're going to go to Coffee for Good at 2:30 to wish Achilles a happy retirement. As I mentioned, the Earth Day proclamation is going to be here at 3:30. Parkway School, Arbor Day next week, 2:30 on Monday. We'll be there, celebrating Arbor Day. On Monday night, 7 o'clock, the Friends of the Cosco Library is sponsoring a forum on zoning. That's always in the news with 8-30G. Very important to our town and what our town's going to look like and every town will look like. So be there. It's going to be, if you can, at Zoom. Myself and our Greenwich delegation, our state senator and our three state reps will be there, as well as our local man use and housing expert, Sam Romeo, will be there. So at 7 o'clock, there is a Zoom link. We'll get it out in the, our weekly e-blast today. And the Pollinator mural is going to have a ribbon cutting on the 27th of April at 11 o'clock. So that's, I can't believe a year's gone by already. So that's something we're looking forward to. And the Holocaust, we're going to have a Holocaust Memorial Commemoration on the 27th at Temple Shalom. I believe that's around 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock. And there's plenty of other things, but we have a meeting next week, so we'll fill you in on all the other updates. But lots going on here in the early spring. So I'm all set there. Lauren, I'm looking at you. Do you have your updates? Good to see you.
Yes, thank you. And hopefully, there won't be some noise in the background. I apologize for not being there in person. I have a new garage door being installed that was ordered, actually, last November. So chances are that today's the day that they need to install it. So Happy Earth Day to everyone, and I want to wish my sister a happy birthday. She is my role model for the six Rs. So happy birthday, Karen. And just some of the highlights and some of the things that I've been working on, I did attend yesterday's MPO and WestCog meeting. And I think, just sort of coincidentally with Earth Day coming up, we did get a presentation from Eversource on a program regarding electrical vehicle charging stations and what they're doing for residences, municipalities, and commercial entities to increase adoption of electric vehicles, learned all about the different voltage of electrical outlets, 120 volt, 240 volt, 480 volt, and all the different rebates that people can obtain. So I'm going to share that presentation, certainly Janet, for you with the Sustainability Committee, as well as our department heads that are connected to putting EV charging stations in our municipal or near our municipal buildings. Learned a lot about a term called range anxiety. So that is something that I guess is a barrier to adoption. Also, at WestCog, we approved an amendment to the LOTSIP program. And for those of you who don't know what LOTSIP means, it's the Local Transport Capital Improvement Program. And this is for the pre-application phase to replace the bridge over West Brothers Brook on North Street. So the entire cog approved that. And then this morning, attended our first meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust and Advisory Board. So it's exciting to get that off the ground, especially after our board members were approved by the RTM last week. And basically, our next steps will be somewhat educationally focused, just getting the whole team on board with some of the terms, policies, legalities, what other towns are doing, things of that nature. And I know it's the tail end of Volunteer Weeks. I wanted to thank personally our members of the BET and RTM for all of the work that you have been doing on our town budget.
Thank you very much, Lauren. And over to Janet. Good morning, Janet.
Thank you. I'd like to focus my update by observing again that today, we celebrate Earth Day. And appropriately later in this meeting, members of the Greenwich Sustainability Committee will formally present its most recent State of Sustainability Report. Guided by Sustainable Connecticut and the town's Plan of Conservation and Development, the committee and its community partners support townwide initiatives that foster the protection and restoration of our natural resources. I took office on December 1, and starting on December 2, I had the honor of co-chairing the Sustainability Committee, along with the Town's Director of Environmental Affairs, Pat Sesto, taking the baton from Jill Oberlander, who did so much to get the committee off to an impressive start. I also have the honor of serving as this board's liaison to the Energy Management Advisory Committee and the Harbor Management Commission, bodies whose missions are no less critical in promoting sustainability in Greenwich. It's often said that Greenwich runs on volunteer power, and the Sustainability Committee and its network of community partners, EMAC, and the Harbor Management Commission are excellent examples. This week, we observe National Volunteer Week, and I thank the incredible number of town residents who contribute their time and talents to this town, and especially today, those who support sustainability. I humbly acknowledge that they and the equally committed and capable town staff make my job so easy and such a pleasure. But let's not overlook that behind the pleasure there's cause for serious concern. Climate scientists estimate we have a mere 10 years to significantly change our ways before climate change becomes irreversible. Embedded in the goals of Sustainable Connecticut is a commitment to equity, not least generational equity. Our youth deserve to inherit a clean and healthy environment. An honest look at the driving force behind many of the environmental initiatives in town reveal it's our youth. We must heed their pleas and serve as role models and environmental stewards. We have as much to learn from them as they from us. We can't wait 10 years to begin our efforts in earnest. We need to begin today. And where do we begin? Typically, I would have included in my update a shout out for upcoming events that I think are worth noting. However, there are so many in honor of Earth Day that I'm not even going to try, lest I overlook one. Instead, I'll direct your attention to the town website and ask that you go to the conservations page and click on the button called Conservation Kaboodle, where you will find links to the over 30 organizations in town with sustainability-related missions. There's something for everyone, and I encourage all of us to go on a nature walk, help with a neighborhood cleanup, or support a fundraiser in the spirit of celebrating Earth Day. And I take that back. I do have one specific shout out, which Fred has already mentioned. I invite you all to return to Town Hall today at 3:30 and hear the annual reading of the Earth Day proclamation. I hope to see you all there, and may every day be Earth Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Janet. Yeah, and I neglected to mention that over the weekend, I was going over some of the summer ideas and initiatives. And I, something I wanted to do for a long time, and I named it, which can be changed, Greenwich Green Corps. And I'm going to be reaching out to the Youth Commission to see if they wanted to lead on that, where we have really unbelievable volunteerism when it comes to our different organizations here in town. And we do them probably quarterly, and sometimes twice a year, these cleanups of various areas in town. But, you know, as we go along, it's, there's so many people going through our town every day that don't stay. And sometimes, you know, trash accumulates. Sometimes graffiti appears. I spoke with DOT and got them to basically whitewash the graffiti along the train tracks that we can now see, because when they did the clear cutting, and two days later, it went back up again. So realized that if it's visible, they're going to continue to go back there. So we're working on some ideas there. But I wanted to do something more consistently, you know, on a monthly basis. And having a Green Corps in place there that could be youth-driven or could be with all of our various organizations is something that I think that could live beyond, you know, our terms in office. And I think it would be a nice thing, because we have the volunteers, we have the will, and we do have a very, very clean town. But, you know, we always wanted to make it, we always want to make it better. So I'll be sharing more on that, and certainly with the Sustainability Committee, absolutely take a lead on that. So thanks for all your good work there. Now, going on to old business, we have one item, which is our naming rights policy. And we have our senior policy analyst, Dan Carlson, with us, who did a lot of work on this. Thanks, Dan. Good morning. Good afternoon, I should say.
All right. Good afternoon, for selectmen. Board of Selectmen, thank you for having me back again. So I'm here to discuss the second reading of the Board of Selectmen's naming rights policy. Just briefly, this purpose is to establish the criterias and procedures for the Board of Selectmen to grant naming rights to town-owned properties and facilities. As mentioned, this is the second reading. The first reading was on March 24. There's been some minor adjustments made based on discussions with the first selectmen, as well as feedback from the public. And we've also supplied a workflow of how the process of the granting of naming rights will work in practice. So we'll go over those changes, walk through the workflow, and then answer any questions as needed. So one minor point of clarification before I get started, there was some confusion last meeting on if this policy needed to go to the RTM for approval. That is actually not needed, because this is a Board of Selectmen policy. It is not being presented as an ordinance. So if this is approved by the Board of Selectmen, then the policy will be established. It's important to note that the RTM has 100% purview on any gift acceptance, so they will be heavily involved in the process. And we've added them into another additional part of the process as well with our change, as you'll see shortly. So we had two specific changes. They were minor changes to the policy that was brought forth on the 24th. The first one is that after the Board of Selectmen reviews this in the first regularly scheduled meeting, the proposal will be referred to the appropriate RTM committee for advisory comments between the first and second Board of Selectmen meeting. So if it's something related to the Department of Public Works, it would more likely be going to the DPW committee for review and advisory comments to bring to the Board of Selectmen and first selectmen before the second meeting and ultimate approval or decision on that. The other change that we had is we wanted to make it clear that naming rights do not confer any other rights to the donor outside of the naming rights. So any gift, in addition to that, any gift or contribution accepted by the town is not an endorsement of the named party. So those were the two minor adjustments. And then the only other item that we added was the workflow, as mentioned. You can see that in the agenda packet, where we show the workflow of how a proposal is submitted to the Office of the First Selectmen based off the specific scope outlined in the policy. It would be reviewed by the First Selectmen administratively to make sure it fits the purview of the policy. It would go to the Board of Selectmen meeting first. Once that's established, it would be sent to the Advisory Committee for the RTM for advisory comments. Then after that, would go to the second Board of Selectmen meeting. Once it gets approval by the Board of Selectmen, it would, if there's a gift attached to it, it would then be sent to the RTM for their review, approval, and acceptance of the gift, which would ultimately complete the naming rights policy there. And if there was no gift attached, the written agreement would then be established by the town and the named party, and that would be completed there. So those were the changes and the clarifications for the Board of Selectmen's naming right policy. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you so much, Dan. And yeah, we recognize that if it was a, you know, the sole discretion of the Board of Selectmen, that we did want some RTM input on it. So that's why we thought going to those committees, appropriate committees, would be a good idea. So thank you for incorporating that into there. Turn it over to my colleagues.
The only thing that I would add is the workflow's super helpful. The visual, I think, is really helpful to understand the process. So thank you for adding that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I've given this a lot of thought. The BET has asked that a policy be established so that in a town where so many projects are funded by public-private partnerships, the honor of bestowing someone's name to a project is done fairly, consistently, and transparently. And I note that, as appreciative as we should be of our town's generous benefactors, naming is an honor that should be done with great consideration. And as a funding strategy, it should be pursued with balance. Because with time, the costs of projects increase, and holding out for private gifts may mean that the town's share of a project's costs become greater than if it elected to publicly fund the project in its entirety at an earlier date, and thereby allow the town to enjoy the benefit of the project that much earlier. And specifically, my concern is that the policy is currently proposed doesn't specify a threshold gift to qualify for naming rights. The standard practice seems to be generally 50% of a project's costs. This threshold is a fitting definition of a substantial gift. Moreover, when it's transparent to potential benefactors what naming rights will cost, it removes the element of negotiation from the gifting process. So that's my concern as we stand.
Thank you so much. Yeah, and when you mentioned that two weeks ago, we had some discussions on that, because it was, I think, very worthy of a discussion. And going back to my comments then and bouncing it off of people, the concern with that is we really want to take it one proposal, one pledge at a time. Because if you say, if someone offers us $4 million, and it doesn't hit that 50%, then we have to walk away. So I'd rather keep that flexibility there, but certainly substantial. I mean, in the past, we've given naming rights for a couple million, where we just did one for 5 million. And I think substantial, we, I think, I think people, especially in the RTM, are concerned about not giving it away, you know, having some type of threshold without losing that flexibility. So we could, I think, I'm okay with it as it is now, but certainly, we can fool around with the definitions of it. But I just worry that we may box somebody out, you know, and not doing it on purpose, just, but I get where you're going, though, because I think, I think we all share that. It's just, I just, the flexibility there, again, if we have a hard, you know, and fast percentage, and someone says, you know, I'm only giving you 5 million, which, and it may come to 45%, right? Then we'd have to, we'd have, we'd be boxed in. So, but we definitely hear you there. So I think with that in mind, people will pay attention to it. And we certainly could revise it if there's a better idea out there, but we've been asking, and it really seems to be stuck on that one. But Lauren, if you had any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I see where the thought of putting in an actual percentage, you know, makes sense. But, you know, to your point, you don't want to box somebody out if they're like at 40%. I think, I guess, the definition of significant is sort of like, you know, the beauty is in the eyes of the beholder. So if there was some way to, without being hard and fast, like a range, maybe, that, you know, up to a certain percent or at least the minimum of a certain percent, I wonder if that would satisfy, Janet, your concern?
I definitely, I think something has to be in the policy. It, like I said, it takes away the negotiation, and it actually makes it easier to get what you're hoping for, you know, however you want to define substantial.
Yeah, I mean, again, in the past, we've given naming rights for a lot less. And usually, there's a time limit. After 15 years, you revisit it. And I think that pretty much, now, again, the most recent one, which is our biggest one, was a $5 million one. And I think everybody was happy with that. But if we had a 50% threshold there, we wouldn't have gotten that $5 million. It would have killed it. So I really don't want to go down that path, but I'm still, you know, going forward, open to some ideas. I mean, especially the RTM may come up with a better definition of significant, but I think we really go down a dangerous path if we say 25% or 50% or 75%. Because again, the biggest, biggest contribution we just, we've ever had a few months ago, we would never, we wouldn't be able to accept if it was 50%. So especially with these projects getting more and more expensive. So I'm okay with the way it is, but was definitely open to continuing the dialogue, because I get where you're coming from. And I think Lauren does, too, and it was a good suggestion. But I'm personally okay with this now, but certainly, there's two other votes here. So I'm okay with it as is. But again, I'm happy to continue discussion today or, you know, in the coming weeks and months and years.
But it almost seems like we need a benchmark for significant. So yeah, to even create it in the policy. So maybe there's a way of just, you know, defining or indicating that, you know, over time, the appropriate range would be documented, because we don't have a lot of benchmarks. Or if we do, they're not necessarily documented.
Yeah, I mean, we could actually see how this works in the next couple of years, and then maybe revisit it and say, you know, we have a little bit more experience now, especially as we're going to be looking at a brand-new hockey rink, or skating rink, and we're looking for significant contributions there. We could have a little bit more data to go on and see how things go, because I think public-private partnerships are going to be the way of the future. And certainly, this policy is a great beginning, because we never had one before. And we're not probably going to answer every single question. I think we've gotten most of them, thanks to Dan's good works. But this one sticking point, I like the fact that we are now focused on it. So we could certainly keep an eye on it and say, you know, as things go on, we could take this up at any other time to revise it even more going forward. But I think you, the work you've done now, and it's critical that we get something in place, you know, as soon as we can, and then certainly revisit it over time and see if we have to adjust it.
Great. And one thing I would like to add, it's not exactly to your point, but we did also add a stipulation where we would have a professional valuation service come in to identify the right cost of what it would take for any naming rights policy. So at least we can align, align the cost with the importance, so to speak, of each name valuation. And ultimately, it will go to the RTM as well, too. So we did add a couple of things in there to help identify the true, the true donation cost and to try to keep it a little bit more structured in that area.
Okay, thank you. And certainly, future boards would have, and RTMs would have the right to say, no, we want a little bit more. So give them that flexibility, too. But that's certainly helpful. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work on that. Okay. So do we have a motion on the floor to accept this policy?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we accept the Board of Selectmen's naming rights policy.
So if I second that, that's seconding the motion. It's not my vote. Right, okay. So I'm, yes, I second that motion.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
And Janet Stone-McWiggin is a no. I think it's going to surprise people that I'm such a hard negotiator. But that way, this is a note that says, let's, let's come back and revisit this.
Thank you so much. And yeah, and I think that's, that's a good position to take on this, is we will monitor it and see that, you know, be thankful that we now have a policy in place that really covers almost everything, except for this one little issue that we'll work through. So yeah, I think we're all committed to doing that. So Dan, thanks again for all your work on this.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. And we do have a second agenda on the old business calendar, which is the proposed lease and MI for the Boys and Girls Club at One Horse Neck Lane. And thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello, good morning. I'm Megan Sweeney, Vice President of Administration for the Boys and Girls Club of Greenwich. Christina Vittoria is actually joining us on Zoom. I think you see her up there. She was having some connectivity issues, but I think she's able to be here. This is our second read, and we had our first read in March. And simply, we're just looking to lease the space across the street from us, One Horse Neck Lane, for two years while we do some renovation at the clubhouse. We would be using it for administrative offices and storage of items while we complete the renovation. And this would really be instrumental to help us to continue to provide our services with as minimal disruption as possible to our services, in short.
Thanks, Megan. Yeah, we've, we've discussed this, and I know there was some concern about this temporary structure from many years ago being permanent, but that's not the intent. The fact is that we're very grateful to have this. It got us out of a lot of jams, having this open to us. And certainly, we've done it more recently with Neighbor to Neighbor, and of course, before that, the Fire Department. So, you know, we're, I have no questions. I certainly support this. But just for the people out there who may be wondering about the longevity of this, ultimately, the plan is to eventually take this down and maybe enhance that parking lot, make it not only have more spaces, but also beautify it. So it's just not an ugly surface area parking lot. But certainly, having this here has gotten us through some jams. And again, this will, could help you, too. So thank you for being here. Thank you, Christina, for joining us via Zoom. Good to see you. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good to see you. Any questions?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to echo a lot of what my colleagues just said, which is, thank you, Christina and Megan, for all you do for this town. And again, the questions that I posed shouldn't reflect any lack of support for the Boys and Girls Club. It's more a question about the use of this facility, which, yes, when it was erected, it wasn't intended to be sited there permanently. it wasn't intended to be sited there permanently. And I quip that it's, it's like the DIY bookshelves that my husband and I bought early in our marriage and swore up and down that we would get rid of it the first opportunity, but there was always a use for it.
There, isn't it?
There was always something that they could be useful for. So, and I think, I think this building is something like that. So I, I'll just pose to you, as you search for accommodations for the rest of your operations, would you be open, if, if a space was appropriate to move the administrative space and the storage space, would you be open to moving to that site and then giving up this?
I don't know if Christina wants to answer that, or if you want me to answer that.
Sure, I can answer. Can you hear me OK?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Great, thank you. Janet, thank you for that question. We, of course, would be open to many different options. I think the reason that this option was sort of the most attractive and the more, most useful was to allow the least amount of disruption for us to be able to move in, in time for the renovation, as well as be able to monitor the progress of the renovation throughout the time in such a close proximity, in such close proximity to the actual work site. And I think that having those offices there, because most of the club will not, there will be no occupancy in the club during this renovation. So this is definitely a preference for us, a strong preference. But, again, we try to be open-minded to all opportunities.
Thank you, Christina. Lauren, do you have any comments or questions?
No, no, I'm good. Thank you.
OK, well, thank you, and thank you for the question. All right, is there a motion on the floor?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the Boys and Girls Club of Greenwich lease of One Horse Neck Lane, and referring to planning and zoning commission for municipal improvement MI.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor. Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
OK, thank you. Megan, thank you so much. Christina, thank you for joining us. See you around soon. OK, going on to new business, we have three items. And the first up is the Sustainability Committee Annual Report. And we have our friends Julie and Elizabeth with us. And Myra, Julie's going to, OK. Good morning, Julie.
Hi. Happy Earth Day.
Happy Earth Day.
Thank you so much to the Board of Selectmen for the opportunity to present the State of Sustainability Report on behalf of the Greenwich Sustainability Committee. I'm Julie Deschamps, a member of the, of the committee. The State of Sustainability Report is a manifestation of the committee's purpose. We aim to record existing initiatives and raise public awareness about the achievements and challenges of town departments, local nonprofits, schools, volunteers, and other entities toward a more sustainable community. The committee encourages sustainable practices through the promotion of goals established in the Plan of Conservation and Development and the actions outlined in the Sustainable Connecticut Certification. Our town was the highest-scoring municipality, which qualified for this certification, attesting to its commitment to building community connection, equity, and long-term resistance, resilience. Each of the committee's seven sectors, business, community culture, food systems, land and water, advocacy and legislative, transportation and air quality, and waste reduction, contributed to the document, providing a snapshot of the state of sustainability in Greenwich, as well as a guide to future action and priorities. The report communicates each sector's purpose, community benefits, goals, and resources for further discovery. Townwide progress and achievements by community partners are highlighted, along with supportive actions taken by the committee, such as advocacy and education. The report identifies and acknowledges our dedicated community partners who have achieved much success and continue working for the protection and restoration of our natural resources while enriching the character of the town. On this, on this Earth Day, we encourage all to read the State of Sustainability Report to celebrate the accomplishments of so many working toward a more sustainable and resilient future in Greenwich. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julie. And thank you to the committee for all your great work. As you mentioned, we're moving the ball down the field, which really is, it's, all these things are win-wins for everybody. Not only is promoting clean environments for us all to live in, but also it's efficient, and it's economical. It makes, just makes a lot of sense. And with the focus on it and the leadership of you all, and your, your good works, we'll continue to move that ball down the field. So thank you for all that you do. And we still have a lot more to do, I know, but we're, it's exciting to see the steps and the gains that we've made in the last few years. So thank you. Any other comments and questions?
Again, thank you.
Yep, I want to thank you as well, and just, you know, for everybody, I encourage everybody to read the summaries and just all the, the interconnections and just the, what's the word I'm looking for? The tenacity of a lot of members of this committee. I know that change is slow. We don't have that luxury to be slow, and I just really appreciate, you know, all your efforts to move things forward in a positive direction. Julie, I don't know if I dreamed it or read it this morning about some laws around styrofoam, so maybe we'll get them out of the schools one of these days.
Can I, yes, Hartford passed the bill, so polystyrene is now, now no longer allowed.
Senate.
Oh, sorry, this, OK, got it. Not quite, not quite across the finish line, but, OK.
It probably will pass that, and then it just waits the governor's signature. So, yeah, so we're certainly moving the ball down the field. And I know the, the balloon issue came up, which was, people laughed at it when I brought it up about four years ago, about banning Mylar balloons. And I said, do I want to be that guy that bans, brings it up banning, and, you know, people love balloons? But as we see, it's become a problem. It's, it caused a power outage the other day in a fire in Greenwich. Because I think maybe there's some, you know, a midway point there, and I think that maybe Hartford would be a little bit more open, because it was a bipartisan no. No one wanted to touch it a few years ago, but I think there's certainly some common ground there, things like that, where, you know, you don't want to spoil people's fun and be, you know, kill, you know, buzzkills, but certainly, you, you know, we have to be aware of the fact that those balloons not only could cause fires and power outages, they also end up in our waterways. As I kayaked the Byram River last week, we're actually going to be doing a cleanup of the Byram Pembroke area, and we're going to do it by foot and kayak, right in the middle of that Byram River, which is beautiful. It's, if you haven't kayaked or been in the middle of it, you really, you can't believe that would have, it's such an underrated venue and view. There is a lot of debris in the middle of it that you're not going to get to walking. So, and you see, you see the balloons, you see a lot of things, and paper bags, which, thank God, have diminished, but they're still out there, especially on a border town, you know, area, where New York and Westchester may not have the same laws at Connecticut or ordinances that Greenwich has. So still a lot of work, but it's fun, and you could have fun doing this stuff. Like I said, kayaking, good day to get some exercise in, get your steps in if you're walking, and you're doing a good deed, cleaning up. So lots of good things. And, again, thank you for all your good work and your leadership. OK, next up is the GEMS road closure request, and we have Tracy with us, I think.
I wish I was that pretty.
Patrick, how are you?
Yes, how are you?
Pinchitting. Good to see you, Patrick.
That's it. Tracy got stuck in jury duty today.
Oh, good.
Thank you for securing us some time to put in our request. Happy Earth Day. We're going to be hosting, what would have been, if it went out for COVID, our Fourth Annual Kids' Triathlon, June 12th. And having learned from our, our first event, where we had only taken one lane on Hillside Road, there was not enough space for our bike routes, so we had put in a request to close off Hillside from East Putnam to Fairfield to through traffic for the event, the biking portion of our event, which would be approximately between 10 and 2, 8 and 10 o'clock AM.
Thank you, Patrick. And it's, it's funny that you're, this is, involves Hillside Road, because we have a resident of Hillside Road in, in the audience, so.
Two residents.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry, two residents. So you make it some questions right away here. So the floor is yours, if you have any questions or concerns.
I didn't, you know, as everyone knows, I'm.
Elizabeth Dempsey.
I'm sorry. I'm not, oh.
We're fully supportive of GEMS and are so appreciative of what you do. So I personally think that that's a great, a great situation, and as always.
And I agree, from Three Hill.
I think, I think you'll find our record of over 20 years of living there, you know, we're supportive and community-oriented, and know that it's a great hub. So, and I'll put in my pitch that we would love to have GEMS support for a second form of egress, to have a proper driveway for you all to reach the school under all situations, especially during a lockdown, where the entire, you know, East Putnam and Hillside gets frozen. So we love what you do, and thank you so much, and we're always happy to help and, and pitch in. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your support, and we'll make it as inconvenient as possible.
Thank you, Patrick, and thank you, Jenny, and thank you, Elizabeth. And I will certainly state my support for that second ingress-egress. It's, I think, the only high school this size in the state that doesn't have a second road. And as you said, it's, it's a public safety thing. So we're, I think we're all, most of us are geared towards that. We just got to get it, get there quicker. But the people of Hillside Road have endured a lot, and they certainly are great partners in our town, and have, you know, faced a lot of adversity, and they're still there supporting and, and volunteering. And so I think we owe it to them to, to really work harder on that second road. But thank you for your support for this, this event. And Patrick, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
OK, thank you. OK, is there a motion on the floor?
Can I just?
Oh, I'm sorry, Janet.
It's OK. I just want to add my support for a second egress as well. And I was going to ask, this is not, of course, your, your first triathlon, I was going to ask if there was, you know, any opposition from the community, from earlier ones, but we've heard, we've heard from the community today that there's support, so you've got my support. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Janet.
So, thank you. And Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request for the closing of Hillside Road on June 12th from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All is in favor. Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
OK, thank you. Thanks again, Patrick.
Thank you.
Good luck on your event.
Thank you.
You're welcome. OK, last on the list for new business, we have our superintendent, Dr. Tony Jones, with us for a request to form a Central Middle School Building Committee. It's always in the news.
Thank you. And I do want to say, I didn't know the second egress was going to be discussed today, or we might have packed the house in support. So I do want to just mention that. We are requesting just the establishment of the building committee so that we can stay on a very aggressive timeline. We don't want to lose the summer without being able to get the building committee together. So that's our request as of today.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jones. And timeline, as far as getting this to you, roughly?
Well, because the RTM, it has to go to the RTM, right? And, and they don't meet after May, so it's really getting it, you know, through the RTM in May, is my understanding. I've only done this once before, so.
I think it would be June.
Actually, actually, it would be the June meeting. Because the May, they take up the budget.
That's right, that's right.
But just by colleague's benefit, we would need to source an interview to get on the June call. Our deadline would be May 20th, so we have to operate rather quickly.
Yes, and thank you. We have, we've already received some good resumes, and there's, apparently, there's one really good one on the way. So we will get, move in on that next week. I've also suggested that we add liaisons, not voting members, one from the neighborhood, one from the ADA community, and one from the energy management. So just so they could be there at the table when we're doing these things, rather than present it and then have people say, well, why didn't you consider this? So they wouldn't be voting members, but they'd be at the table just to help along, you know, everybody's input.
Yeah, I think the more the merrier. It's going to be an enormous project and so important for the community.
Yeah, I think this could be a template going forward, that we have those liaisons for all building committees, so we know we're doing the right thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So is there a motion on the floor to accept this request?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request to formally nominate members of the Central Middle School Building Committee in preparation for the June RTM meeting.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I wholeheartedly second. Can I just say here, you know, if there's any media listening in, that, that means that because this is quite the condensed time period, that if there's any interested candidates who want to nominate themselves for this building committee, please do so quickly.
And, and just as a reminder, it's through our Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee site, which is on the town website. They're not sourcing the members, but we're using the same process of collecting nomination forms and resumes.
OK, thank you. And he just fell, Peter Schweinfert had raised his hand to say something. There he is. Peter, how are you?
Hello, everyone. Happy Earth Day. I, Fred, I wanted to come back to the agreement, or the, what I thought was an agreement between the Board of Selectmen and the Energy Management Advisory Committee, that we would be able to put someone representative on these building committees who would be a voting member, not merely a participant.
Yeah, I don't remember that. What I suggested was to have ADA, Energy Management, and the neighborhood representative there as, as just a liaison, just to go, to start out, and then if, see how that works out going forward. Because I think going forward, every single building committee should have each of these groups represented. But I didn't go as far as a voting member on that. But we could certainly discuss it going forward.
OK.
OK, thank you. Any other questions? OK, so.
I might say for Peter, that a path forward, if you had another skill set, in addition to energy management, I mean you personally, so, for example, on the GHS, Greenwich High School Security Vestibule Building Committee, we do actually have a neighbor that had another skill set, so she's doing double duty in a way. So that, that could be a path forward.
Yeah. Could I, Dan?
Just to give it some flavor, because I, again, wholeheartedly support the involvement of EMAC early in the, the building committee's process. I'm not sure that EMAC was interested in remaining on the committee for the entire length of the, of the committee's work life, but really wanted to get some input very early on, because that's when it's most critical. So I think by, by serving as a liaison and being present at the table, I think you accomplish that.
Yeah, certainly, I agree, Janet. And I think going forward, we could, like the other thing, we, the other item before a few minutes ago, we can certainly revisit it later on. But I'm worried about with all, when you expand the committee to have all the liaisons, when you start to expand the voting members, numbers, then it starts to get a little bit unwieldy sometimes. So I think this is a good first step, and certainly, EMAC is going to be at the table. And I think, the way things are going, everybody's going to be a little bit more open-minded to suggestions from ADA, from EMAC, and from the neighborhood, because we want the neighbors to be heard, too. And that's what we did at the Vestibule Committee, as Lauren pointed out, and that's worked. It's worked. So I think this is a good first start, a good first step for, for this. So, but thank you, Peter, for, for coming on. OK. Oh, Elizabeth.
Sorry, I didn't expect to speak on this, but I did, I wanted to underscore what Peter was saying, and Janet as well, and wanted to point out one thing that hadn't been brought up in regards to EMACs or any type of sustainable contribution toward the beginning of a building committee. committee, and that is, with the passage of Public Act 2129 last year at the state level, that is putting more resiliency and energy and shoreline authority within planning and zoning. And I recently happened to spot, hop in for a minute to listen to the energy guidelines that EMAC is working on with Margarita and Katie at P&amp;Z, as well as the, you know, the full commission. And I was just, I've just been so impressed with Peter's committee and the incredible detail and, and understanding of how we can do things and save the town's money. So, underscoring what Janet was saying, it might be worth considering, because if you can't get these things done initially, you're not going to save the money that will reduce our town costs. And secondly, maybe the Board of Selectmen should, could also look at the aspect that planning and zoning may require this. And a good example is the Vestibule Committee that came, that did so much wonderful work to bring a new front entrance to the high school. But the ed specs, I would say, Dr. Jones, like, didn't include things that are now required of all Greenwich residents, such as landscaping, which I know can seem like a nice to have, but it's starting to become state law, is what I'm trying to tell you. And, you know, and it will become part of the planning and zoning. And Margarita did correct the building committee and said, no, you have to provide this, because this is what we're asking of other residents. So, I would say you want to keep in step with what planning and zoning is going to start to, to approve, especially on Central. Even yesterday, they were talking about it has to have 20%. Sorry, I don't want to preview, but there were certain discussions about certain numbers that have to conform. So, we would be wise to look at that now, and I can't think of a more cost-conscious and sustainable improvement by incorporating EMAC. So, just my two cents.
Yeah, and that, thank you so much, and that's what we've done. They're incorporated right now as liaison, with a liaison. So, they will be at the table, they will be strongly offering suggestions, and with the help of, you know, state law, and also our other agencies and departments here in town, and the citizens. I think people are going to be more open to listening. And again, that's why when we did the Vestibule Committee, putting somebody on, Ashley Cole from the neighborhood associate, that actually helps. It really does, because at the end of the day, you don't want people coming back saying, why didn't you do this? Or why didn't you listen? I think if we get it right from the beginning, that's, you know, that's a first, good, first, a good first step, but certainly we could, we can go, you know, amend it a little bit more, but this, I think we're going in the right direction.
Can I, can I pile on?
Can I clarify a couple of things? Can I clarify a couple of things? Sorry, Janet. First of all, I mentioned, you know, Ashley wasn't just on there because she was a neighbor, she was there for some architectural sort of design, you know, expertise as well. So, to my point, you know, if somebody has a broader skill set than just being a neighbor, that's like super helpful. And Elizabeth, the comment around, you know, the landscaping, because I am on the GHS Vestibule Building Committee as a non-voting member liaison from the Board of Selectmen, what wasn't contemplated was the budget for landscaping. So, it wasn't necessarily that the ed specs didn't include it, it's the budget for the building didn't include landscaping. So, that's something that this particular building committee, because there isn't going to be a feasibility stage, will have to think about as they determine what the budget should be to replace this school. And it's not just the physical building part.
Thank you, Lauren. Janet?
And just a few thoughts for the community. I don't think it can be overstated that the interest of energy management and our children's interests, they're not in competition. I mean, they, there's definitely an alignment there. You know, again, it's, it's what our youth want, but it's also in their, in their interest. And ask any parent of boys in February, watching them go to school in shorts, and often it's because our schools are overheated. You know, it's, it's not just a matter of saving money, it's, it's an interest in, you know, making sure that they're comfortable in school as well. So, I'll leave it there.
Thanks, Janet. And I think Claire Kelgallin, our friend, has joined us and raised her hand. Good afternoon, Claire.
Good afternoon. Hi. Just for Claire Kelgallin, just to make it official, I served on the New Lebanon Building Committee. Just a little context, one thing Janet said, or, and Lauren said, there is, you don't write ed specs for landscaping. Not to say that that isn't an important part of the integrated project, but ed specs are about what the campus needs to deliver the educational program. So, I do think it needs to be addressed in a budgetary manner. And then, just to the energy point, just to point out that New Lebanon was a LEED gold certified building. We really strove to make sure we got that gold level, but just so people understand, there's a floor in school buildings in the state of Connecticut. You cannot build a school in Connecticut unless you meet Connecticut State High Efficiency Standards for Public Buildings, which are roughly equated to LEED silver standard. So, if you want to look at those specs for the people who are, who are looking at it from the energy perspective, that is actually built into minimum requirements, and certainly you can go higher to gold or platinum, all of which comes at different, you know, price points as those elements get added in. But it's certainly embedded in the project itself, because even if the ed specs don't say it, you have to build to Connecticut's standards and try to go higher. Now, for New Lebanon, we had a goal in our ed specs with regard to trying to obtain the gold standard, but again, the state mandates a minimum to start with. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you, it certainly is. Thank you for providing that information and perspective, Claire.
We made the, we made the motion to vote, but we haven't actually taken our vote.
Okay, so, thanks again, everybody. So, we made the motion. So, all those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. And thanks, everybody, for, for coming on and your thoughts there, and we will, we have our work cut out for us in the coming weeks, so we'll start on that next week. Now, we have a public comment section, if there's anybody in the public that would like to say anything. Myra?
I was going to raise my hand while you were talking, because it's related. I come, my name is Myra Clockenbrink, and I come in the capacity of the co-chair of the landwater sector of the Sustainability Committee. And we thought it appropriate representing the Sustainability Committee to make a statement for this new facility at Central Middle, because we believe it is a tremendous opportunity for the town to build a model school for the other GPS schools that will have to be built in the coming years. Sustainable construction not only reduces operating and maintenance costs, but reduces the carbon footprint of the school well into the future. A sustainable building produces fewer pollutants and greenhouse gases, protecting the health of the students and staff, all the while using less energy and water. With a sustainable build, less fossil fuel use is more clean value. A sustainability focus would necessarily prioritize consideration for the footprint of the site, solar orientation and building construction, and of course, energy, all of which I'm sure EMAC would comment on. And not only can the school be oriented to maximize solar capture, for instance, but geothermal wells could supply consistent heat, as you were referring to, not shorts in winter, and high-performance HVAC systems that can cool the building where it is needed without wasting energy cooling the entire building. Greenwich Country Day School now has a nearly 90%, it's 90% net zero energy operation, and we might learn a lot from their experience. As we all know, CMS has been built over wetland, and designing the necessary drainage system with green infrastructure, such as rain gardens, bioswells, and cisterns, could go a long way to mitigate the effects of the high water table and bring students in touch with nature both inside and out of the school. CMS fields should also be on the planning table and be built high and dry to help meet our school's increasing demand for dry, usable athletic fields. A focus on modular design offers opportunities to reduce the carbon footprint of the project by having some of the construction built offsite, minimizing waste and reducing landfill. Sustainably sourced materials and emphasis on natural light, low-demand lighting and water use systems are all a no-brainer for new construction now. A landscape with trees, vegetable, and pollinator gardens can extend the classroom outdoors and give students essential skills that will become ever more necessary with a changing climate and extend sustainability goals and values to future generations of students. Inside the school, we can all no longer waste resources by throwing away food. The food we waste is resources and money lost at great cost to our environment. We have to do better in our schools. System-wide collection, recycling, and composting has been shown to result in a 55% reduction in trash by weight with minimal expense. Dishwashers, along with reusable trays and utensils, are a must in new buildings. The new school reusable ware, the New Lebanon School reusable ware pilot in 2019 cut cafeteria waste by 80% by volume. The majority of Greenwich schools were built a half-century ago, and many of them will have to be rebuilt. Considering construction through a sustainability lens will afford the town dividends on its investment and will not only save money, but provide a template for the construction of our future facilities. A future-facing, systems-oriented design will excite interest from the community and inspire giving, both financial and on the ground. Best of all, it will improve the delivery of education to our students and reward staff with a high-functioning teaching environment. If we begin with a sustainable mindset, we can bring our school's building up to the same standards we expect from the education we deliver to our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well said, and certainly something that I think everybody should be thinking about going forward. As you said, the return on investment there by doing the right thing at the beginning will, will pay dividends, especially as these facilities get towards the end of their useful life. So, thank you.
Myra, can Myra forward her comments on to the board?
I have, I will.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, appointments or nominations?
Yes, I have a few.
Okay.
So, Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve Bill Ingram to the Harbor Management Commission as a returning member R4 for a term expiration date of March 31st, 2025.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay.
Next, I motion that we nominate Sarah Madden to the Board of Health as a new member R2 for a term expiration of June 30th, 2026.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Next one, Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the nomination of Matthew McCarty to the Board of Parks and Recreation as a new member R5 for a term expiration of June 30th, 2025.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Next one, Lauren Raven, I motion that we appoint Cynthia Chang as a new member of the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2026. I mean, I'm sorry, 2020, I, Barbara, in my email, I reversed these, 2025, sorry.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
And final, Lauren Raven, I motion that we appoint Karen Royce to the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee as a new member for a term ending June 30th, 2024.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you, Lauren, for getting all those nominations to us. Is there any other business before the board? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thanks again, everybody, for coming here. Great meeting, and again, Happy Earth Day. Thanks, Janet, and, I mean, thanks, Jenny, and thanks, Barb.